Let's go ahead and begin the report. Manager, I think this is the point in time count.
Yeah, Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing this time for us to hear from our partners at Echo to give the results of the point in time counts. And I know we're a little crunched on time, and so I'm going to pass it directly over to the Executive Director of Echo, Matt Malika. With that, Matt.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Council, Mayor and Council, for providing us the opportunity to speak on the results from our point in time count this year. Today, Sarah Dzinski, our Vice President of Quality Assurance, is going to be taking over the beginning of the presentation, and you'll hear from me later on. So Sarah, take your way.
Could you try?
You're kind of faint. We can't hear you.
Let me try to turn up my audio.
Much better now we can. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Excellent. See, is the, is the PowerPoint up?
What, what is the file name on the PowerPoint?
What's the file name?
I have two of them here. B3 or B4?
It should be 2020 point time count.
Is it B3 or B4?
B3.
B3.
Okay, B3.
Excellent. When we get that up, I just want to thank everybody for your patience on the release of the pit count data this year. As many of you know, Echo and the city and many other partners were tapped to help lead the homelessness COVID-19 response. And that has really been an all hands on deck endeavor for the last couple of months.
Okay, great. Thank you. And your, and your presentation is now up.
Excellent. Next slide, please. Okay, so briefly, just to recap what the purpose of the pit count is. We really want to understand the number, characteristics, and subpopulations of people experiencing homelessness in Austin Travis County, so that we can appropriately target funding and services. Very brief recap on the background. It's an annual count. It's required by HUD. And it's really just one measure of homelessness in our community. It's a snapshot or a prevalence estimate of homelessness on one night. We have other ways that we look at this data that can help us provide a more complete picture. Next slide, please. Next slide? Thanks. Okay, so we did discuss methodology in February when I presented last, so I'm not going to spend too much time on this other than to highlight some of the methodological changes in 2020, including the web-based survey with geolocation capability, the increased volunteer count, and the subdivided geographic section. So in 2019, we used divided Travis County into 36 sections. And this year, we did, we divided it into 74 sections, which kind of allowed for a more thorough granular count. So those are some key methodological changes that we believe have impacted our findings. Next slide, please. Okay, so I just also want to point out the limitations of pit count. You know, there's variations in methodology from year to year. There's variable conditions, geography, weather, volunteer considerations can all impact the count. And another is visibility. Per HUD guidelines, people must be seen to be counted. So some hard to reach individuals may not be counted. And this also includes people that might be staying on someone's couch, or perhaps they're in the hospital, or they're in, in jail, and they are homeless. They will not be included in the pit count. And there's also the potential for duplication, which we take all measures to avoid, minimize and remove any duplicates, but that possibility remains. And then finally, the unsheltered count relies on a combination of survey and observation data. So it's also possible that those that are surveyed in our unsheltered count differ from those that are observed in the unsheltered. Next slide, please. And next slide. Okay, so this year in 2020, we counted 2,506 individuals overall. That was an 11% increase from last year. We saw a 20% decrease in the sheltered homeless count and a 45% increase in the unsheltered count. We also had an additional 39% increase in our volunteers this year. Next slide, please. So in this slide, you can see in the last three years, we've had increased volunteer participation. And you can see a proportional increase with our increased volunteers. Next slide, please. In this slide, you can see the point in time count across the last decade. So from 2011 to 2020, in blue, we have the unsheltered count. In orange, we have the sheltered count. And it's varied only by, you know, less than 150. There's, you know, from 2011 to here, it's a fairly small spread. Next slide, please. This slide, I think, is one of our most important findings from the pit count. We look on the left at the point in time count, the raw counts over the last decade from 2011 to the present. In black, you have the total 2506 for this year. In orange, you have the sheltered count, and in blue, you have the unsheltered count. In the middle, we have the projected Travis County population. And you can see that that population, and as we all know and have experienced, that population has increased fairly dramatically. On the right, we have the point in time count per capita. So we're, we're looking at approximately 0.2% of the overall population of Travis County is per the point in time count. So that actual rate of homelessness has remained fairly constant over the last decade. While the count might be tracking with population growth, the rate is remaining the same. And I think that's a testament to a lot of the work of our partners in helping keep that line flat as opposed to going up. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a map of the unsheltered homelessness by city council district. A concentration remains in the city center, District 9. But we did a, an analysis of dispersion, and it showed that more unsheltered individuals were counted away from the urban core in 2020 than in 2019. And this was a statistically significant finding. Next slide, please. This is the unsheltered homelessness by city council district and municipality. So on the left, we have the council districts. On the right, we have the municipalities. And that municipality table is also inclusive of the council districts as well. So we saw an overall increase of 488 individuals counted. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a comparison of the proportion of people counted in the pit count by city council districts. So you can see on the left-hand side in blue, that's 2019. And in the right, we have orange, that's 2020. You can see that most of the council districts saw an increase, while District 9 actually saw the largest decrease in proportion. Next slide, please. So this is a map of unsheltered homelessness by county commissioner precinct and election precinct. You can see here as well that the concentration remains in the city center. But again, that increased dispersion is illustrated in some of those outlying election precincts. You can see the darker green further out in some of the outlying areas. More so than last year. Next slide, please. And next slide. Okay, so before we present the demographic data, we do a year-over-year comparison in our subpop, subpopulations. And so basically, if the pit count as a prevalence estimate provides a snapshot of homelessness on one day of the year, we use other measures such as the coordinated entry system, which is captured within our homeless management, excuse me, information system, or HMIS. And that kind of provides a more rolling video of people entering and exiting the system over time. That gives us more of an incidence estimate. So Echo's coordinated entry system basically provides a single point of entry for people experiencing homelessness to access vital resources. And, and those resources enables those providers to talk to one another. Coordinated entry is required for continuum of care funded programs. And so it's really a way for all of those partners and collaborators to efficiently connect households to services, support programs, and housing to end their homelessness. So you'll see as I present the next set of slides, I'm going to be comparing pit count findings with our coordinated entry findings. Next slide, please. Okay, so age. You can see on the left, you'll see 2019. On the right is 2020. Homelessness by age, we saw the proportion of children decrease by 3.7%, which was actually a statistically significant finding. Youth and adults increased slightly, but that year-over-year comparison was not statistically significant. For our coordinated entry system, youth homelessness actually dropped 8.1%. And when self-resolved homelessness was accounted for by 28% in 2019. Next slide, please. Okay, veterans. So the proportion of veterans increased slightly by 0.5%. Again, that year-over-year comparison was not statistically significant. But per the coordinated entry system, homelessness is actually reduced by 40.1% among veterans. Next slide, please. Race. So up on the top, we have 2019. On the bottom, we have 2020. We did find the proportion of Black African-American increased slightly by 1.3% this year. Again, that was not a statistically significant finding, but it's something that we want to keep an eye on. Black African-Americans represented 36.5% of the 2020 pit count, and meaning that they are well overrepresented in our population. So if they're 1 in 3 individuals in the pit count, they're 1 in 10 individuals in Travis County. And per our coordinated entry system, homelessness was actually reduced by 1.9% among that population. Next slide, please. Ethnicity. So the proportion of Hispanic Latinx decreased by 3.2%. That year-over-year comparison was approaching statistical significance at a P-value of 0.053. It's something to keep an eye on. Hispanic Latinx are slightly underrepresented now in the pit count as compared to the population of Travis County. So in 2019, Hispanic Latinx comprised 33% of the pit count, and now they're comprising 29.8%. We don't know exactly why that is, but no, we're concerned that if, if there are people out there and if there's, you know, a culture of fear, we want people to be seen and, and be served essentially. Next slide, please. Gender. So we did see a small increase in the proportion of females in the pit count, about 2.3%, and a small decrease in the proportion of males, a very small increase in the proportion of trans or non-conforming. None of these were statistically significant, but we did talk with our partners, and they, you know, thought that perhaps women might have felt a little bit safer being seen with the ordinance changes, since they are kind of a vulnerable population among the homeless population. Next slide, please. So the proportion of people experienced with prior experience of homelessness increased by about 3.5%. That, those individuals now comprise 61.3% of our population, which speaks to chronicity. The year-over-year comparison was not statistically significant, though. But it is something to keep an eye on, and it kind of goes hand in hand with our next slide. Okay, so the location of first homelessness. Contrary to popular belief, Austinites or people experiencing homelessness report, the majority report Austin as their first location of homelessness. So 63.4% reported homelessness in 2020. That's up slightly from 2019. People reporting just Texas in general as their first location was 19.4. So that's Texas other than Austin. And then out of state remained a kind of steady at 17.1%. So people reporting that their location of first homelessness was out of state, and then they arrived here. And so that kind of speaks to the fact that this is really sort of a homegrown problem and something that we really want to bear in mind as we're thinking and planning moving forward. Next slide, please. Okay. All right, so it's important to talk about what is housing first. This is an approach that really focuses on quickly and effectively connecting individuals and families with permanent housing. It focuses also on removing barriers to entry like sobriety or treatment participation requirements. And this has been sort of a shift in our resources over the years as emergency shelters provide increasingly efficient housing-focused case management. The City of Austin, Echo, and community partners are really coalescing to expand available permanent housing and service to need in Austin Travis County. Housing First is an evidence-based approach that has been shown to be cost-effective and efficient and cost-effec, and cost-effective. But we definitely know that increased permanent housing resources are needed to keep up with need in Austin Travis County. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide shows a shift in resource capacity for permanent housing in our community over the last 10 years. You can see in orange, we have permanent housing beds. In blue, we have shelter beds. And so Housing First research shows that participants access housing faster and are more likely to remain housed. They're less likely to use emergency services such as hospitals, jails, emergency shelters. And studies have shown that they can utilize up to $23,000 less per person per year in public resources than when in a shelter program. Next slide. Okay, so this is the total number of clients housed in Austin Travis County from 2017 to 2019. In orange, we have minimal housing assistance. In blue, we have permanent supportive housing. And in green, we have rapid rehousing. These are each different types of, of services that we provide. You can see that they've increased over time. 2017, we housed 1,615. And now in 2019, we housed 2,171. And that's an increase of 25% from the 2017 year. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to hand it off to Matt for a few slides.
Thanks, Sarah, for that overview. Can people hear me fine? Yeah? And nodding. It's nice to see everyone. Nice to see everyone's faces. It's been, seems like it's been a long time. So I want to talk a little bit about addressing racial disparities in our homeless population here in Austin Travis County. And this is something that's on the forefront of everybody's minds right now, given the racial disparities that COVID have highlighted for, for all of us across the country that have, that have existed for some time. The quote from Kiana Fisher from Caritas of Austin is, is fantastic. And I don't, I don't need to read it word for word, but it's something that we should all think about, that Echo is taking to heart. And that I think we're, we're really resolute on focus and focused on making sure that our coordinated entry system and our response to homelessness here in Austin Travis County is equitable. And that we, we are challenged every day as a service provider community, as, you know, in our governmental, or, you know, in our government, and in certainly through our systems, to make sure that we are addressing racial disparities within our community. So, you know, we know that there's a disproportionate impact on homelessness in the Black African-American community. It's concerning. It's unacceptable and needs to be, it needs to be, we need to continue to work towards remediating that. We have an equity, a racial equity tax group that Echo is a part of. It's focused on trying to find solutions, ensuring better equity and access to housing opportunities within our homeless response system. We're taking a look at our coordinated entry system this year, and we're working to add some questions that gets, you know, gets toward making sure that our system is equitable and access is equitable for, you know, our people experiencing homelessness, our non-white folks. On a community level, we know the problem's bigger than our homeless response system. Our community needs decision-makers to tackle broader structural inequities that impact our most vulnerable populations. I want to commend council members Renteria, Harper-Madison, Councilmember Kassar, Mayor Protem Garza, for the letter that I saw that went to Governor Abbott asking for the expansion of Medicaid in our state to provide better access for health care. Thought that was, you know, a wonderful example of a way that we could create a more equitable, more equitable access to, to health care and housing for our population experiencing homelessness and in poverty. So thank you for that. Next slide, please. So the COVID, COVID-19 in the homeless response system, we know, and we have known for many, many years, that having it, your health care and your health situation does not get better through unsheltered homelessness. Any doctor could tell you, no matter what condition you have, it's more likely that you will get well faster if you are housed and have appropriate shelter. So it was no shock to us, obviously, and to many of you, that COVID-19 is highlighted, that people experiencing homelessness are twice as likely to be hospitalized, two to five, two to four times as likely to need critical care, and two to three times as likely to die from COVID-19. We know, as you know, and you all have taken steps to address this here in Austin, that there is going to be a new wave of economic insecurity due to the pandemic. Food, health care, health insurance, housing, lack of access to those put more people at risk of becoming homeless. We know, you know, that Echo and the city, city council, mayor and council, city staff have led a charge to stand up more resources to support people experiencing homelessness. Some of those resources are listed below. I want to take a minute here just to recognize our health care workers, our health care for the homeless workers, EMS, community health paramedics, all of those in our community providing behavioral health and substance treatment services to people experiencing homelessness, harm reductionists in their community, our emergency shelter staff, outreach teams, permanent housing providers, and certainly city staff. And the many who are on the phone who have partnered with Echo through this process to make sure that we're bringing critical resources to people experiencing homelessness in response to COVID. I want to specifically thank organizations, you know, obviously our homeless service providers, but also, you know, Austin Public Health, the downtown community court folks, the homeless strategy office here, really great work in partnering to make sure we, we help get people off the street so that they can practice social distancing. I want to thank Mayor and Council for your efforts to, to bring resources to bear for this population during this time. And we're going to work really hard to capitalize on those resources to ensure that we do more to end homelessness here in Austin. Next slide, please. So this slide highlights some of the efforts that our partner organizations have put in over the last year. I won't, I won't go down and read all of them so that we can have more time for questions, but it's really important. The breadth of this work is really important to recognize. The, one of Sarah's slides that talked about homelessness as in relation to population of Austin and how it's been pretty constant, she really shows the extraordinary effort that our service provider communities put in, the work that they do every day. We know how to end homelessness here, and, and I think that's on display year after year through the programs that are run, some, some of which funded by the city, some through continuum care funds. But, you know, these partner organizations listed here and many others know what it takes to end homelessness here in Austin Travis County. Next slide, please. So what's next? What are we doing? I think we know we have a need for more permanent supportive housing in this community here in Austin. You have all taken steps to address that. The City Manager Office has. There's an RFQ out right now to run motels and hotel motel conversion strategy. We think that's going to be a really important step in the direction of ending homelessness here in Austin Travis County. We know the great work that Mobile Loaves and Fishes is doing to complete their Phase 2 expansion in the Community First Village. Very important to bring that work to scale. And of course, foundation communities will open their 25th community at Waterloo Terrace this year, totaling 132 new affordable housing units in an effort to prevent homelessness and provide affordable housing for those in our community. So we know there's a lot of good work happening here in Austin Travis County. We know we need more of it. And next slide, please. So here's some key takeaways. We had increased point in time count volunteer capacity and improved survey methods. Because of that, we've had a more, we have a more thorough and accurate count of our existing unsheltered homeless population. That's clear. The count of unsheltered homelessness has increased, while the per capita rate of unsheltered homelessness has remained pretty constant over the last decade. We showed that. I think Echo feels pretty good about saying that the, the increases in our unsheltered homeless count have a really strong correlation to our volunteer base, and I think that's important to recognize. We still have a lot of progress to make on eliminating racial disparities and, and housing populations disproportionately affected by homelessness, like Black African-Americans, veterans, and youth. We need to keep our eye on the ball there because we believe at Echo that, that we're not going to be able to end homelessness without really seeing it through the lens of racism in our country. As continued, majority of people falling into homelessness are Austin Travis County residents. There's a lot of factors associated with that, including rising cost of rent. Austin is even with Las Vegas for the least amount of affordable housing per rental, per 100 people in the, in the country. We need to do better. We need more affordable housing here. We need to increase Housing First programs. We know they're effective in addressing homelessness. Increased permanent housing is needed to keep up with demand in Austin Travis County, and particularly in light of the pandemic. Next slide, please. And I'm not going to read our references. Although to say I was part of eight, the Parvinsky and Pearlman Housing First. So thank you. And questions, I think, are next.
Matthew, thank you for this work and for the presentation. On the night of the point in time count, was there a, did one of our shelters have to empty out for some reason? Did that impact the count or no?
Well, it impacted the count in the sense that we had a decreased number of people in our shelter system. And we saw our unshelter, our shelter number drop and our unsheltered number go up. And so we did, we did have one of our shelters that had a, some, I believe it was a plumbing emergency at the time that caused them to close down part of their, part of the shelter that night, yes.
Any idea what that number was of people that would have been in the shelter and obviously couldn't be there because it was closed down?
You know, it's hard to say. Sarah, I don't know if we have that exact number of the impact, the change.
I don't have an exact number, but we do know that a couple of the downtown shelters shifted to a housing-focused case. housing focus case management model, which reduced their bed count. That was by about 130, reduction of about 130. And then we also reclassified some housing that was transitional housing and then correctly reclassified as rapid rehousing, and that accounted for another 103, I think. And the burst pipe accounted for about 25.
Okay. So, somewhere about 250 people would just be that kind of statistical change. Great, thank you. Thank you for the work you both do. Questions from council? Councilmember Kitchen?
Thank you all very much. This is, it's very helpful to see this kind of, so I appreciate it. And I'm fine with the amount of time it took. It's very useful information. So, thank you, Sarah. So, and Matt. So, I have a specific question. It's really, has to do in part with slide nine, but also, I think, slide 26. So, or not 20, not 26, I'm sorry. Yeah, 26. So, here's my question. So, when I look at slide nine, it looks to me like the count per capita is going up. It's not flat, but it's going up slightly, as you said, but I don't want to overstate it. I don't think we should call it flat because it's not flat. So, when you look at the point in total count per capita, I'm concerned about the trend because it is going, it's going up. Now, I'm also interested in the fact that in 2011 down to 2015, it went down. And I recognize that there's limitations based on how many we're counting, but this is a total count per capita. So, anyway, I just don't want us to overstate because I don't think that we can call the graph on nine as, as, as flat. So, but then a more important question for me is on 26. I'm curious about, this is great in showing us additional clients housed. And I'm wondering if, if it's possible to look at that as a rate per population or if perhaps there's a different kind of measure that would be more appropriate. But I'm trying to understand the raw numbers on the, the housing doesn't help me understand if we're actually improving the proportions of unsheltered people that were getting housed. So, I don't know if that's a rate per population, which would actually give us a comparison if we're talking about the rate for, for population unsheltered and the rate per population that we housed. But you may have a thought on a better, a better measure than that. I'm just trying to understand if we, if the proportion of people that are unsheltered, how are we doing in terms of, in terms of getting more of those folks into shelter? Although I can't hear you, so.
You're kind of quiet. Turn up the volume?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I want to first address the first question. And we actually did run a statistical trend line across, and going back to slide nine, from 2011 to the present, and that trend was fairly constant and slightly on the, on the decline. So, from a statistical standpoint, it has remained constant.
Yes, but I'm not talking about that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I didn't mean to suggest, I do see a drop since 2011. I think that's, I guess I was thinking more that it, that it was looking to me like if you look at 2017, 18, 19, and 20, we're continuing to go up, although I realize it's slightly. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to explain what I was talking about.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, that slight uptick in 2018, 2019, and 2020 does correspond, if you look at slide seven, corresponds with increased volunteer count and improved survey methods. So, the digital survey did help us to count faster and it increased the number of people that were counted per volunteer. So, they were going through the surveys more quickly and we were getting more thorough response rates. And so, that uptick in those last three years tracks pretty much identically with the increase in our volunteer count. But that said, I think the, the higher number is more representative of our actual existing population. So, I, we don't think it says so much that the, the population is growing right now. It's that we're doing a better job of counting the existing population. And then to address your question on slide 26, we would, we would need to go to the drawing board on that. And we might reach out to you because we would need to look at a different denominator and give some thought to that. We could certainly look at ways to think about this problem creatively and also, you know, run some different analyses to better answer questions.
Okay, all I'm trying to get at, and I don't know what the best way to do it is, is the raw numbers are helpful. I think it's, I'm very encouraged that we are, that we are housing more folks, but, but it doesn't help me understand how that relates to the need. So, that's all I'm looking for, is some kind of, some kind of relative measure, and I don't know what that, the best one is.
And thank you for that input.
Councilmember Kitchen, just so you're aware also, that I think the, there will be some modeling, I think, that is going to get presented to council or being a report that gets sent through from some of the consultants that the city's been working with that I think could better show you where some of those gaps exist.
On that slide on 26, why did the permanent supportive housing go down?
Yeah, that's a good question because those programs became more effective in keeping people housed every year. So, that's turnover in permanent supportive housing units or new units brought online. And so, what you're seeing is more folks staying in our permanent supportive housing programs. Not, that's not a slide that'll show you the number of beds. So, it's the number of people housed. And in permanent supportive housing, if those programs are doing well and folks are staying in them, that number should continue to decrease hopefully. So, we don't see exits and therefore turnover where someone else would then get housed in that permanent supportive housing resource.
Thank you. Colleagues, any further questions? Ask Councilmember Renteria.
Yes, my question would, is that has the Roadway Inn and the 300 additional homes in Mobile Loaves and Fishes, have they come online yet?
So, the Roadway Inn right now, and I know that, I'm sure there's some city staff on the, on the line that can probably provide more context. My understanding is that those units are now in the process of some remediation that needs to take place to be ready for permanent housing. But no, they have not come on yet. Councilmember Renteria.
How about the low, the 300 units over there?
Nope, those are in process right now. I believe they're going to start phasing in the first folks getting housed, hopefully sometime this summer, if I'm not mistaken.
And how many units are those? I know there's 300 over there, but Roadway Inn, how many units?
The Roadway Inn is 87 or 85 units, I believe.
87, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Tovbo.
Yeah, thank you so much and thank you Echo and, and our city staff. I would echo the thanks that Matt Malika mentioned to all of, all of our partners in the community who have worked so hard to make sure that our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness have the health resources, the food resources, and the other care that they need during this period of time. I wanted to ask a specific question about, I think it is, well, the correlation between, in looking through the numbers of individuals who were surveyed this year. District nine, as you point out, my district has, has the largest number of individuals experiencing homelessness. It also had the largest increase by far, really. You talked about the fact that, that this year there was more, there was more dispersion in terms of unsheltered individuals counted in areas outside the urban core. And I wondered if you had any assessment of how that correlated to volunteers and where volunteers were assigned this year?
So, can everyone hear me? That's a great question. Necessarily, I think, other than just that, I think the granularity of our subdivided sections, having those 74 sections and having more volunteers kind of plugged in to each of those sections helped us perhaps count more people that had previously, maybe they were previously there and we just hadn't had the resources to count them. Or there may have been some factors that sort of pushed people out into some other areas. We don't really know the why, but yeah, I think having more volunteers and having more granular hit sections helped.
Thank you. And just, you know, by way of anecdote, and I'm sure other teams found this too, in the team, on the team I was counting with, we encountered, I would say, multiple, multiple encampments where individuals didn't want to participate. And so, you know, I think it's worth, it's worth noting always that as you have, these are estimates and there, there certainly are more individuals who are experiencing homelessness than these numbers always reflect. But this is, you know, I really appreciate all of the people who came and volunteered and all of the work of Echo staff to make sure that our count is as thorough as possible. It seems to get better every, every year. And I just wanted to thank you too for, for highlighting some of the other efforts on here. I think the work that our community is doing to increase the number of beds across the spectrum of from rapid rehousing to permanent supportive housing to housing for families and kids, to housing for our elders, I think is just really tremendous. And so, thank you too, while you're not just providing data about the need, the really significant absolute need, also showing us some of the work that's been done and how it, how it is having an impact is important. You know, and this morning we had an opportunity to talk about the spending plan, and you've hit on a really important point to consider as we think about those allocations. And that is the real danger that we're going to have, we're going to be here a year from now looking at these numbers and see an increase because of individuals who in the midst of this economic crisis have fallen into homelessness. And so, you know, I hope that we can be really thoughtful about investing significant resources in rental assistance and those other prevention strategies so that we, we don't see increases in these numbers that could be otherwise avoided. And then lastly, I want, I had a question about, and this is not directly related to the pit count. It's really about an item on our agenda. On Thursday, we'll be asked to approve purchasing of one of the pro lodges. That would be, as I understand it, used in the immediate, immediate times, but also be able to, to provide longer term housing. And I wondered if we could get just a little bit of information about whether that lodge is already being used and if it is at capacity and if there is a waiting list for other protective lodging. And that's probably for our staff, but maybe Mr. Malika, you have information as well on that. I'm trying to get a sense of where we are in our numbers of housing individuals who need that protective lodging.
Yeah, so, you know, I think certainly the city staff will be able to provide you a clearer picture, but I know just from being on the calls with city staff that we do have a waitlist currently for pro lodges right now for high-risk people experiencing homelessness that are in need of protective lodging. And so, even with pro lodge four open and running, and let me tell you, pro lodge four opened, I believe noon yesterday and was referred, I think 60 some odd people by mid-morning. And the city staff have done a remarkable job of standing up those pro lodges as quickly as they have with the behavioral healthcare coming from integral care. It's really quite amazing to see how quickly those are brought online and operational. So, that's very encouraging to see that happen so fast for people in a time of need. But I think probably, you'll probably get a more thorough answer from, from the city staff on availability.
I think ACM Shorter was going to say something?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll provide exact numbers because the numbers are fluid. But I will say generally that when we opened pro lodge four, that yes, we absolutely had a waiting list and were able to immediately begin to move individuals who were in need of housing and support, move them into pro lodge four. I want to not give a bad number because again, that number fluctuates really daily. But again, to generally say that we were able to immediately begin to utilize that facility.
ACM Shorter or other staff, I would be interested to know how large the waiting list is, just to get a sense of that scale. Either, if not on this call, at another time. And just, I'll leave it there, but Mr. Malika, I would ask you and others in Echo and others in your, who you're working with, as you identify needs, I know this is, this is something that I, I'm asked by my constituents. How can they help? What can they do in this immediate time? And so, as you identify those needs where other Austinites can, can pitch in, I hope you'll let us know so that we can amplify those and get those, that word out.
Councilmember Tovbo, thank you.
Okay, further comments? Great, Matthew, thank you so much for the presentation. Sarah, thank you and, and all the partners working on this. And I, and I am excited that we're moving forward toward those 300 rooms as part of this. I know some of my colleagues addressed this earlier, the degree to which we can take some of this money that we're getting for the emergency and leverage it for institutional changes going forward so that we get a long-term benefit. We want to maximize those opportunities as much as we possibly can. And this is in a specific kind of facility that lends itself to that, you know, by definition. Thanks for everything guys are doing.
Thank you.
And then I'd point out just at a really high level, you know, we're having challenges in certain populations and in other populations, we're doing better than many other peer cities. Jales is an example of an area that we're doing well in. With, with so many people, Director Hayden and Director Shorter and Matthew and the team, this community was one that everybody really jumped on really early and, and isolated and has, it's certainly a susceptible population, but it's been so much more protected because of that work and we're so much better placed than many other peer cities with this population. So, thank you for that.
Mayor, I would just add Vela Carmen as well to that list.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's move on to the next presentation then. Manager, this is the one on Brackenridge.
If I may, Mayor, do you mind if we do the pulled items that relate to public health? And so, we can just allow our public health staff to lead if that's amenable to the council?
That'd be fine. So, you want to pull up 21, 22. I understand 23 is being withdrawn. So, you're speaking to items 21 and 22, Manager?
Correct.
Okay. Councilor Flanagan, you pull both these?
Yeah, I had a question on the Q and A about statements of work that I don't think has been answered yet, but more specifically, to what extent is reporting the data back to the city part of the expectation of these vendors?
Director Hayden's on to respond to that.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. And thank you all for moving this up a little ahead on the agenda. So, with our current process, our vendors are required to submit their deliverables as they complete them. But then we also have a reporting of the number of people they serve and how much financial assistance they are providing or the performance measures. And so, our, each one of the vendors has their process of how they are ensuring that the individuals that they serve are meeting the recommendations and requirements. For example, they have, you know, some type of, because of COVID-19, they are eligible for this funding. And so, on the other side of it, we, what we set up is, is we've set up four-month contracts. Contracts are four months' term. Not to say that the vendors have to have the contract for that amount of time, but that allows us for them to provide all of their. but that allows us for them to provide all of their financial assistance and the services that they're going to provide. But it also allows them to close out the contract and submit all of the final closeout reports and the summary data that we are requiring of them. On the other side of this, our staff will add all of these contracts to the rest of the contracts that we go out and monitor. And so when our folks go out to monitor, we will typically select a, a time period. And because these were, are, are just a, just a short, quick in nature, normally we have a 12-month contract. We'll pick a month out of the year. With this one, we'll probably pick a week or two out of the term. And then our folks will go to their offices or have them to, you know, send us some information. But we will go out and monitor, ensure that the, the clients that receive the financial assistance, that they have the documentation from those individuals and, or households and as well as that they met the, the criteria. And our partners are using various systems, as I said earlier. The city does not have a client data system. And so we are allowing our partners to use the systems that they currently have in place.
The data that they'll report back, is it? Well, I'll just say what I'm asking for. My hope is that we will be able to report in closer to real time than at the end of a four-month contract, demographically in the aggregate, where the dollars went.
That information, we are planning to provide a, a monthly report to council only because all of the contracts have a different date. And so it's just, it's just easier for my staff to be able to pull that information together on a monthly basis and provide a monthly report back to, to, to council.
So, so we can expect to see the, the demographics on who's receiving individual support through these programs on a monthly basis? That's how often the data will be updated?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I know that the business support stuff is happening, I think, out of a different department than yours. But I'm also expecting to see similar data reported back. And for businesses, I think it's fair to report the actual businesses. Obviously, we wouldn't do that for individuals. For individuals, we would aggregate the data. But those are, I think, fair expectations for the public.
Okay. Was, was there anything additional that you would like to see in our reports? We typically provide the number of people served, you know, amount of assistance, demographic data.
Well, I think I'm, I'm more concerned about what data you're receiving from the vendor because we can slice and dice it however much we want later, unless you're not giving the data. And so that's why I'm bringing this up in the context of the contract so that we're requiring the vendors to report back, whatever it is we're requiring them to port back, report back. And they all need to report back the same thing, or else the numbers won't add up, as you know. So that's what I'm, I'm driving towards. I think there's still an open Q and A on that. And so I'm happy with you answering this in full through the Q and A process.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay.